Okay, we'll call this meeting of the Loma Linda City Council to order. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Councilman Daley.
Here.
Councilman Papeskia. Mayor Potemfree Duper.
Present.
Mayor Riggsby.
Here.
And Councilwoman Leonard is absent, thank you.
Thank you. We had a closed session, conference with a labor negotiator, and is there a report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the City Council has been in closed session under item C on the agenda. This was labor negotiations where the council received a report and gave direction to the representatives of the City Council in those negotiations. There's no final action to report at this time.
Thank you. Now we will have our invocation pledge of allegiance. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the public on any non-agendized items?
Good evening, our local council members. Tonight, I'm not here to talk about water conservation. As you may or may not remember, my name is Dennis Bolt. I am a water treatment operator for the city of Loma Linda, a backflow coordinator for the city of Loma Linda and water conservation coordinator for the city of Loma Linda. And I'm here tonight along with a number of my colleagues who have expressed an interest in learning more about how City Council operates and the whole process. So, appreciate the opportunity to be here and appreciate the opportunity to work for such a great city and it is truly a pleasure to be a part of this organization. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, then we'll move to our first item, public hearing that has been continued from May 9 regarding first reading and set second reading for July, amending the municipal code.
Good evening, Mayor Riggsby, Councilman, and the many members of the public. My name is Lorena Materita and I am the Associate Planner for the city of Loma Linda. And tonight I will be presenting the latest development code amendment, the new and approved sign ordinance. In 2014, staff and planning consultants began work on targeted amendments to the development code. First, the zoning and allowable uses. Second, the overhaul of the definitions. And lastly, this final phase, the update of the sign ordinance. So the draft you received last week is a complete replacement of chapter 17.18 signs of the Loma Linda municipal code. With the emergence of the new advertising technologies and the evolving needs of the businesses and institutions, as well as the most recent court rulings, we needed to reexamine and revise the sign chapter. These new amendments will help staff better review and apply sign requirements and standards, and they will also be clear for applicants when they provide us with complete applications. And most importantly, the new language and standards will make a more legally defensible sign ordinance. Some of the new tools include visual illustrations of what staff expects when a sign submittal is turned in to us. For example, this diagram explaining how to measure signs, as well as this diagram with that lists the types of signs that one might propose. And similar to what we just reviewed and did with the zoning and allowable uses, we also included this tabular format for easy reference and to help better explain the updated standards. We received public comments at the Planning Commission hearing on April 19, which came from Loma Linda University Health. They requested a couple of corrections and clarifications to the draft, such as including the institutional healthcare zone name to a table which we accidentally omitted, as well as asked us for clarification in terms of the public noticing requirements for a comprehensive sign program submittal. In addition, at that meeting, the city attorney discussed content neutrality laws and also presented further revisions relative to the new case law that could help strengthen the chapter. That evening, Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval and adoption of the new sign chapter, inclusive of the suggested revisions discussed at the hearing. In terms of the environmental review, code amendments are exempt from SEQA. Adding and amending sections of the existing code will not result in direct or indirect changes to the environment. So to summarize, the updated sign chapter will allow staff to assist the community with better sign information and standards. It is exempt from SEQA and it is consistent with the goals and policies of the general plan. Staff and Planning Commission recommend City Council approve the amendment to Title 17 zoning, chapter 17.18 signs of the Loma Linda municipal code based on the staff report and the analysis. That concludes my presentation. I am available and so is the planning consultant who helped draft this chapter. Is available for questions.
Just in general, is this a relaxation of the code, a tightening of the code, or just random manipulation of the code?
It's a realignment of the code. For the most part, areas that were a little bit too challenging, a little too strict, are relaxed. There are some issues that were just were never addressed. Electronic signage and digital signage were very strictly limited and those are much more relaxed. So, we're bringing this thing out of the 1980s and into a current standard. But we've really taken a view of this, that businesses need good signage to be successful, but the community also wants something that's attractive and appealing and finding a good balance between those.
Did the Chamber of Commerce provide any kind of forum for the businesses to comment on this in the process of rewriting the code?
They did not, however, the Chamber of Commerce has seen it.
Yeah, I've had some businesses tell me that they were upset because they couldn't advertise their business because some aspects of the code. And I just thought maybe the Chamber would have coordinated some kind of business position on the topic. Because, you know, it's kind of, this code is limiting them.
The Chamber's input was involved primarily around temporary signs, real estate signs, the kind of windsocks banners and A-frame signs that are fairly movable. And they did provide a fairly large amount of input on that that's reflected in the code.
Good.
I guess I have a, I have a question. What would make it easier for me? I mean, this, we had a pretty onerous job to get through the packet for this week. And I have a specific question, but a comment before that, and that is, is it possible that we could see proposals in the future with the strikeout and the additions so that we know what the changes are and can focus on that as opposed to reading a thick document? Because I didn't find what I was looking for, and I'm sure it's in there. And that has to do with, what's the allowable height of a sign in the city now?
For the first part, we can do that if it's a change of a code, but this is essentially a forklift. The entire existing code is being thrown in the wastebasket and there's a new code to replace it. So there really is not a one-to-one comparison on this. That's probably what, that's probably what we resolve is, for the last 30 years, there's been a change here, a change there, and at some point, it's no longer internally consistent. As far as the height, it is dependent upon the type of the sign, the location, the use, the number of businesses that are at the center. So, a place that has multiple businesses can have a bigger sign. Freeways, frontage places can have taller signs. So we try to create it scalable and flexible to the area and the use.
Okay. And just to follow up to the mayor's question, how much input did we have from community businesses? If the Chamber of Commerce didn't organize anything, was this distributed to local businesses? So they, I mean, obviously, Loma Linda University Health got a copy. I assume other businesses did as well.
It was not specifically distributed to businesses or put out. The Chamber did get a chance to provide input on that. And Loma Linda University Health is working on a master wayfinding program. And as part of that, we kept bumping into each other in this, and that's primarily why they got their input into this also.
And the VA, that's the other major operator in the city?
The VA is working, is peripherally involved with the wayfinding, so they also bump into this as well.
Okay. So how, how does it work when a new business comes into Loma Linda? I mean, again, this is a pretty impressive document, and if I want to put a sign up, I guess I wouldn't read the whole thing. I'd come to the assistant city manager and ask him.
He's going to do exactly, he'll do exactly what you're doing in the real world. Go to Lorena.
I would first ask you, what's your address? What's your zoning? As soon as we find out what your zoning is, then we will go ahead and we'll look at the tables, the one sample, one that I provided in the slide. So basically, that's saying, commercial zoning, institutional zoning, we all follow these standards. So if you want to put a monument sign, we just scroll down to monument on that table and it'll tell you what your height restrictions are, your area, your size, your locations. And that's, so I would just print that table out for you. So it is an easier, more, I guess, an easier format for both the planner and the applicant to understand now.
The basis of my questions is that, you know, we see businesses moving into Loma Linda. We're very fortunate, we've got more open areas that will handle more businesses. I just want to be sure that this isn't perceived as a complex hurdle to moving my restaurant or bicycle shop into Loma Linda, but that it is fairly straightforward and reasonable. And what I hear you saying is that was part of the point in reconstructing this?
Yes. So we do believe that the tabular format will make it easier for them to understand.
And if we start getting complaints, so businesses come in and go, my goodness, I can't even get the sign up that I want in the city of Loma Linda. You would get those complaints, I assume. Would they at any point come to City Council where we would hear that there's a pattern of problems with the signage regulations?
Yes, because then I would go and I'd complain to Conrad, and so Conrad would let at least you guys know that we will need to revise and revisit the code.
And there's a, there's an appeal process, correct? So...
There is an appeal process for every decision that we make here.
And describe the appeal process. Who does the appeal go to?
It depends who's making the appeal, but I believe after a decision is made here, after approval, they get 10 days to appeal. And so they would just come with a letter to our office and let us know that we appeal, and we'll put it on the next agenda to be presented to you.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
There's also an ability for variances in this, so if it is a unique situation, and we've done that in the past, the storage place here where, you know, the sign is 40 feet below grade to get an extra high sign or extra large sign. So there's a mechanism for that, and, you know, like all ordinances are, if we find out it doesn't work, we created this one, we can create a new one or change it to make it work and fit our needs.
Yeah, we would have a public hearing. So let's go ahead and open the public hearing with our traditional slap of the mallet on the pallet. Would the public please come forward with any germane comments relative to this item?
I'm with Loma Linda University Health, and I, I'm a project manager, and I just wanted to say that we're very pleased with the sign program. We read through the document and it reads well, and I think it'll serve the purpose of the community very well. So thank you.
Thank you for that. Any other comments? Okay, hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. What's the pleasure of the council to set this as the first reading and set the second reading for July 11?
I'll make a motion that we accept this as a first reading set for second reading in July, Council Bill O-2016-09.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Is there any opposition? I hear no opposition, so it's approved unanimously four to zero. Next is item number two, another public hearing, Council Bill R-2017-19, approving the annual report and assessments for landscape maintenance district.
Mr. Mayor, at the last City Council meeting, May night, the City Council did authorize the staff to have Wildan Financial Services to prepare the engineer report to calculate the assessment for each parcel. And it's available in front of you tonight. And the city staff request that the City Council approve this engineer's report so that we can start assessing the property for the next fiscal year.
Are there any questions of staff?
Yes.
From the council?
If I recall correctly, was there a time where we had determined some of the landscaping districts' assessments were not enough to cover the maintenance? And how do we address that? We just took money out of the general fund to pay offset?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, the first 52 assessment does not have the cost escalation in it. So, and since then, the cost of maintaining those assessment has increased, so the city has been using general fund to feel those different. Now, the way to correct that is to go back to the voter, to the property owner, and ask him to pay more for the landscape assessment.
About $38,000?
Difference?
Close to $36,000.
$36,000.
But this only covers the districts that are allowed to have CPI adjustments.
Correct.
Okay. What was the basis of the difference? And do they, does Wildan have to get approval to go over the book? I'm looking at a 417 versus 381.
That's the assessment versus what we're covering with our general fund.
I understand. And, and so, when we're going to run over what we budgeted?
Yes.
What's the approval process for that?
It's you.
Okay, but we already spent the money.
No, sir, this is for next fiscal year.
Oh, for next fiscal year.
So, so if you, if you say no, then...
So it's an estimate to increase the budget?
Correct. Correct. And if you say no, then we have to cancel the contract and we maintain this.
Okay. And is that just a multiplier that we built in estimating the additional cost, or are there new developments, or?
Correct. For a new development, there will be cost of living, I mean, the CPI adjustment every day, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there a belief from the management of the city that we are maintaining the landscaping in the city adequately with our current budget? Or are we letting some things pile up?
No, we have to maintain it.
Okay. Even in places where the assessments are inadequate?
Yes.
Well, my next question has to do with Mountain View off-ramp. Is that in this budget, or?
No, no, sir, that's not part of LMD. That, that, the Mountain View off...
And this is Area D?
No, this is, this is...
Or LMD.
LMD, yes.
So that's not considered landscape?
No, sir, that's part of the payout of the general fund to maintain that off-ramp.
Why is that not considered part of landscape?
Because, because the landscape assessment, they have the map that showed a different district, different area, yes. And off-ramp is not one of those.
You tried to accommodate for some of this with some, some different types of landscape and things like that, right, to try to lower? So you pretty much were at that point where?
No, we, we...
Much more you can do as far as...
We still can do some more. We can still reduce the grass and put more landscape and make it more granite.
We were getting to that point where we were going to end up looking like a desert community?
Yes.
And we had that, that long discussion about, do we want to look like Asperia or Loma Linda, so?
Although I have to say, what we did at the city entrance up here came out very nice.
They, oh, they do that themselves.
Yeah, it looks nice. I just worry about our off-ramps and on-ramps. We, we, I agree, they just don't do it. All right.
We give a countermand ever more difficult.
Yeah.
Any further questions of staff? If not, then I'll open the public hearing. Come forward if you have a comment. I see no takers, so I'll close the public hearing.
I'll go ahead and move this, Council Bill R-207-19, with a comment that part of keeping the community viable and attractive to businesses and residents and things like that is keeping up our public areas. And so we do have a phenomenal city employees and group that take care of all this stuff, and I'm very proud of the work that we've done, even though we've had to reduce because of drought and money shortages and things like that. I think we're doing a great job, so I will move it.
And I'll second with backing up the same comment. You compare the landscaping in our city with some of our immediate neighbors, in fact, I'm biased, but with any of our neighbors, we do a much better job, so appreciate the good work.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Any opposition? Hearing none, that's approved unanimously. Item number three, public hearing, Council Bill R-2017-20, approving the annual report and assessment for the street light benefit assessment district.
This is similar to the landscape assessment district for street lighting, so...
Question.
Go ahead.
We've been gradually replacing the street lighting with more energy-saving bulbs. Where are we at with that?
Yes, we have been doing that.
That's been a progressive thing for about a couple of years now.
Yes, every time we had to replace a light bulb, we replaced with a LED, yes. And the one along Martin Road, we receive a grant for over $200,000 to replace those lights. So we did that.
So we're continuing that process?
Yes, sir.
You don't have to replace the fixture, it'll, same fixture will take an LED?
No, no, I had to replace the fixtures.
That's what I thought.
Yes.
Okay.
And a lot of them, we replace it in house, so John is doing it, so.
Okay, thank you.
What is the electricity rate we pay for streetlights to Edison?
I don't, I don't know what I'll hear. But it's different rate for a streetlight than the light that we use here, so it's a different rate.
Yeah, I'm curious what it is, because Edison is imposing, starting, I think it started this week, a surcharge on uses between 2:00 and 8:00 p.m. And the streetlight district would, in the summertime, not use that at all.
It's different, a different rate for street lighting.
Is it, is it high, is it low?
It's lower.
Lower?
Yes.
This is just a comment, but I read somewhere recently that California actually has an abundance of electricity during the daytime because of all of our solar and other projects. We actually have too much energy we can't sell off. The problem is, is that nobody's created a good viable storage unit. So if it's not used during the day, they're not able to apply it at night. So it's not, I don't want to say wasted, but in a sense, it's not usable. So at night, we still have a huge power demand that we're not able to meet because we haven't figured out a smart way to store that energy we catch during the day. So it's kind of a little conundrum. So that's part of that prep that...
Yeah, I've heard that we essentially dump a lot of the solar and wind energy that's produced before 2:00 p.m. At 2:00 p.m., the use starts picking up, and then it's really tight between 2:00 and 8:00. And then before 2:00 and after 8:00, there's an excess capacity to handle it. And all of this, all of the stuff that's coming in from the desert with wind and solar is, is only useful after 2:00 p.m. And actually, if you look at, if you, as a citizen, and I recommend people do this, get on the Southern California Edison website and have them compare, and they'll actually take your utilization, and they'll compare the rates under different plans and tell you which plan is the cheapest for you. So I recommend you check that out. The time-of-use plan is probably the cheapest one, especially if you've got something like an electric car and you can charge it at night. And if you run the air conditioner all night long, it's a lot cheaper than running it during the evening. So, check that out. I was just wondering if they, because I think when you're on time-of-use, it's only about 12 cents a kilowatt hour between 10:00 p.m. and 8:00 a.m. And during peak times, it's 33 cents. So, there's a big difference in price, it's about triple.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm just curious what they, yeah, okay. So any other questions of staff? If not, then I will open the public hearing, come forward for comments on the streetlight assessment district. No comment, close the public hearing. What's your pleasure? Can't before the public hearing. Yeah, I just closed the public hearing. Okay, it was premature. This is like...
I will move Council Bill R-2017-20.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of stuff that's about the same, so.
Do I really make a motion on this?
I don't recall that you did.
You made a motion on the landscape maintenance.
But I just made a motion on it.
Would the clerk read back the transcript? Okay, so there's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll say.
Okay, there's a motion, a second, any further discussion? Any opposition? I hear none, so that's approved unanimously. Now, item four, public hearing, Council Bill R-2017-21, approving annexation to the landscape maintenance district number one.
This is the new landscape assessment district for the subdivision at the southeast corner of California and Citrus Avenue, so. This is a new assessment so that when people purchase those homes, they have to stop paying for it, so. And this is for the LMD.
Any questions?
I know we have a professional firm looking at this, but are we sure that the amount we're assessing is going to cover the cost? I mean, it's only $10,000 a year, which doesn't seem like a whole lot, but I'm not sure exactly what, how much landscaping... what, how much landscaping there is to work on over there.
Only the perimeter, which is on California and Citrus.
Okay.
That's it. And inside the tract, the homeowner responsible for front yards. Oh, yes.
Oh, so people are gonna pay in addition to assessment, other homeowners' maintenance? Not to get too caught up in the details, but I'm noticing that it talks about notifying the owners of this assessment, well, they aren't owners, the houses haven't even been built.
Usually do it right now, that's what I usually do right now.
So they're basically, we're basically telling them now, this is how much you're gonna end up paying when you buy your house?
Correct, but they have option of maintaining the landscape themselves also, so they have that option, they want to do it themselves.
And if they choose that?
Then they only have to pay for the administration cost, which is preparing the report and so forth. Correct.
I see, okay.
This is just in case they don't decide not to do it, we have the way to, we can take over.
Yeah, but I mean, obviously, they're gonna be assessed that on their tax bill, aren't they, every year?
Yes.
Is that how they're gonna be paying for it?
Correct. Correct.
I see, okay.
Any further questions? If not, I'll open the public hearing, come forward with your comments about annexing a new development into our maintenance district number one. No public comment, I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
The city clerk has the ballots that have been received. If there was a majority protest, then the annexation will not go forward, so now would be the time to count those ballots and-
How can there be any ballots for a development where no one lives yet?
Well, the, the separate parcels, depending upon the ownership, are each entitled to a protest vote. If they're all owned by the same entity, presumably, those would all come with the same response.
Were they, were they sent through the mail, or did they deliver them in one big lump?
They were delivered by the developer.
Okay. I wouldn't expect that many postage stamps.
No, no postage.
So I would imagine we're gonna get 100% no. We've never had this suspense before.
Since the developer is applying to be included in the district, presumably, they are all in favor of that.
Oh, and is there some rule against opening these in advance?
The front of the office says, "Do not open until after the public hearing."
Oh, it's our own rule.
So we're following, we're following the rules.
I've just, you know, I've been here for 11 years, I've never seen this.
Well, it is like an election where theoretically, property owners could come to the meeting and deliver after the public hearing their votes or protests.
This is like Florida 2000 election?
I'm sorry.
Maybe it's like the Minnesota senatorial election in 2008. Coleman and Al Franken, giant of the senate.
And all 35 are affirmative voting yes, in favor of the assessment.
This whole election was rigged. Yeah, okay.
So we have 35 more.
So we have been ratified. So now we can move on to our item five? Oh.
Second?
We can't even keep track of what we've moved and what we haven't.
I will move council bill R-2017-21.
And I will second it, given the exuberance of all those 35 residents.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Is there any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved unanimously. Now we'll do the same thing on the light benefit district for the same property. Item five. Any questions of the staff?
I'm, I'm still not clear on the amount, I mean, I'm looking for the light district, and it was like something to the order of $2,000 for a full year, and it's-
$56.14.
Per house, correct, per year. So multiply by 35, it ends up being a total of about-
Right, but, but for the streetlights, it's also including Botting Road, Mountain View.
Okay. Well, okay, so it just seems to me like if we ended up, if one of those lights broke down, it would cost us a lot more than $2,000 to fix.
They're pulling in with every other resident, is that right?
Yes.
But it just, if you didn't take into account, the rest of the city just took their lights, it just, doesn't seem like there would be enough to cover the lights, that's all I'm saying.
It sounds to him-
The amount is small.
It sounds to him like an inadequate tax.
Obviously, but it just doesn't, I mean, we had the discussion earlier that we didn't have enough money to address some of these issues, and here are, this is really the birth of a new development, where we're assessing how much money we anticipate they could contribute. And I'm just wondering, not that I want them to pay more per se, but it doesn't seem like the amount would cover if one of those lights went out in that little neighborhood, that's all I'm saying.
We, when the light bulb burnt out, we just go purchase a new one and John will go out and replace it.
Yeah, it doesn't seem like a whole lot, that's all.
The majority of costs is really the electricity for a streetlight.
It must be very cheap electricity, if it's only $50 a year, that's very cheap. $4 a month? Per house? A lot. The light bulbs are a couple hundred dollars a piece.
Yes, about $250.
But they don't, they don't go out very often. The LEDs, they last for 10 years? They don't? So all of those labels on the packages are wrong?
Pretty much.
They vary. Sometimes some last three, six years, it all depends.
How long do the halogens last, are those, those orange lights?
A bird gets inside the head of the light, a day. So sometimes, like I said, it varies, but the LED is the right way to go. Especially if you're worried about more light for the community, and like you guys said, more traffic.
Yeah. Well, as a, as an amateur astronomer, I'm worried about too much light for the community. But they're all pointing down, at least, they're not, they're shielded, so they're not shining straight up. So, okay. Any other questions for the staff? If not, then we'll have our last public hearing of the night. Come forward for your scintillating and informative and enlightening comments about the light district. Yes, we have a taker.
Yes, I am. Hi, Mayor, members of the council, I'm Stacy Reynolds, I'm from Willdan, and we are the engineers who prepared all the reports for you tonight. I'm here to answer your questions, because you had a lot of them. And I'm so sorry I didn't get up before, but I'm up now to answer any of your questions. You guys have questions about the lighting district with regards to how the money is being collected? Right now, you're not contributing anything from the general fund. You have enough money based on the amount of parcels that are in the district, there are over 5,000 parcels in the district, so based on that, you have enough money to cover all your incidentals and your electric bills. So you're covered, nothing to worry about with that aspect. So the parcels that are being annexed into the district are annexed at the same rate that everybody else is paying. So you don't go over that rate, you don't want to go over the maximum.
So as we add more homes, the amount is probably gonna be the same for those future homes as well?
Yes, and if you find out you don't need to collect that maximum, you just decrease your assessment rate.
And how much is the electricity charge for these lights, since it went into your calculation?
We have a breakdown of cost, which is- Well, we have the breakdown of cost, and the general cost for the lighting district comes out to be $217,000 for the lighting district. So based on that, we generally do a pro-rate of the cost, based on the amount of parcels that are gonna be annexed into the district, to come up with the pricing for the annexation. And that's broken down in a separate budget.
I'm just wondering, what's the kilowatt hour rate for electricity?
You don't have that listed.
I know the electric draw on a, on a LED is very, very low, it's, you know, the wattage is pretty low. What's the wattage on a typical one of these lights? You guys would know?
And I did make a note for next year's report to add a lumens chart if possible, because if we know the different pricing structure for the types of lights that you guys are maintaining, we can break it down by lumens and by cost. But we can start on that early, so we can add that to the report next year. Okay, I will.
But not at an extra charge?
No, not an extra charge.
Well, thank you for that. I don't see any other questions, no.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any other comments from the public? Okay, then I'll close the public hearing, and the council gets a chance to accept or reject.
I'll go ahead and move council bill R-201.
I'll adjut our ballots. Yes, 35 to nothing.
35 in the affirmative in favor of the assessment, thank you.
I'll go ahead and move council bill R-2017-22.
And I'll second with a comment, this is probably just the start of this, and we'll probably be seeing more of it in the next couple of years.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Is there any opposition? Hearing none, that's approved unanimously. Next is our consent calendar.
I'll go ahead and move the consent calendar.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, no items to be pulled. Any further discussion? Any opposition? I hear none, so that's approved unanimously. Items six through 12. Next is old business, item 13, council bill O-2016-10, second reading, roll call vote. We get to push the buttons, amending Title 17 of the municipal code pertaining to the development code, this is a big one.
That is, no changes from what you've seen before. This is a, as you saw before, the amendment to the development code, Title 17, and we are looking for an approval for the second reading. Thank you.
You're entertaining a motion yet?
Yes, the motion would be, the appropriate motion would be to read by title only, right? Is it one of those?
Yes.
And, and call for a roll call vote.
Yeah, go ahead, I'll go ahead and make a motion to move the council bill O-2016-10 by title only, the roll call vote, second reading.
And I'll, I'll second that, just say that I was, I was happy that we're, I think we were able to, we had some concerns from the public, and I'm happy that I think we're able to address those and make this complete, so I think it's a good package that everybody approved of.
Agreed.
Council bill O-216-10, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Loma Linda, amending portions of Chapter 17 of the Loma Linda municipal code pertaining to the development code, and you may vote. And it passes unanimously, thank you.
Thank you.
We had a session, a mock city council session for a grade school class about 10 years ago, and the most exciting thing that they got to do was press those buttons, I just loved that. I think it was the third grade. Okay, so next is item 14, designating delegates to the League of California Cities Annual Conference. Is this the one that Jarb goes to every year?
Oh, because it was local.
So we can send three if we wanted?
So, but you're gonna be there anyway now, but can you be a delegate for the city?
You plan to go?
Yes, if you don't go, I could go, but-
Yeah, and it's in Sacramento, which is not a day trip. So. Anybody, anybody excited about going? Beautiful downtown Sacramento.
I'm not interested.
We go raise campaign cash on K Street?
Unless you can change something up there.
I think I made a comment about this earlier, that it's, it's getting, it's getting more and more evident that a lot of, a lot of the different groups that used to have sway and influence in Sacramento politics no longer do, and so we're seeing a decline in membership and sponsorship for the league, because cities, businesses, they figure it's not worth their time and energy anymore, because the league can't get anything done, nobody can get anything done.
Is that because of one-party rule, or what's the, what's the change?
I won't comment on that, but I would say just politics in general.
Who's that? Jarb and Phil?
Jarb is our primary delegate, and Phil is our backup. Do you get two votes, if you're the backup?
But, but Phil needs to let me know that you're gonna be a chairman of the Inland Empire Division.
So, so come this event, then I will then become the president of the Inland Empire chapter. So.
For how long?
Two years. That means lots more events and lots more activities in Loma Linda. Probably, probably just about as active as I am now, which is pretty active.
So then next year, the annual conference will be at the Drayson Center? Oh, so they just go up and down the state, okay. Okay. I think once in southern, I would go, but I'm not planning to go to Sacramento. Yeah, that was, that was a day trip for me, so, yeah. Okay, yeah, it looks like we have agreement. Next is the spring, summer, and, spring and summer weed removal plan.
This is that time of year, we have a lot of weeds growing, and we have a lot of complaint about the resident front yard. And when we give out a citation, they will come over and complain, so, we want to go over the procedures on when the court enforcement had to go out and do some citation, what kind of procedure is he doing?
And I'll take some responsibility for this. I asked that there be a report, because as I walk and drive around, there's more and more yards that, it's like the drought gave people permission to just let their lawns go to seed. It's not just dead, it's weedy. And some of them are at the two or three foot level, and so, he agreed to give us a report, and so I appreciate it.
And Mr. Gil Gaza will, will give us a brief PowerPoint presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, council staff, fellow colleagues, and the public. Not sure, not too informed on the weed abatement process, but usually fire takes care of that. Mr. Shea and the Fire Marshal are more in tune with the larger lots that have the weed abatement issues around town. I mostly take care of the R-one, R-two, R-three residential areas. This is one of my problem properties on the corner of Lilac and Park Avenue, or, excuse me, Lilac and Cottage. And as Mr. Daley brought to my attention, he tells me a lot about stuff on the south side of town. I do have a lot of problems on the north side also. This, this property right here has been vacant. Our, our property owner here, it just lives a couple blocks from the property, too, and I've sent him, I've been here four years, I've probably sent him ten notices. Soon as he gets a notice, they chop down the weeds. It's, it's kind of like I'm babysitting them a little bit, but on the informal side, but it's gone to citation now because I have weeds on the sidewalk, weeds on the, growing out of the fence there, out onto the street, and his weeds, if we go to, am I in control of this? Next slide, that's his yard right there, and the weeds prop.
May I ask a question regarding that? If you can go back to the previous slide. Well, that'll work. Where you have weeds that are right next to the street, when there's, when there's a sidewalk, and obviously, the landowner, and I'm thinking of a property up here on Lawton right now, but there's weeds in, between the sidewalk and the curb. Whose responsibility is that? Is that a landowner or a city?
Well, technically, that is the city right away, but under the, when you, I think it's in their contract, when you buy the home, that you're responsible for landscaping. The municipal code says from curb to the front of your house.
From the curb, okay.
Yeah. So, if you have that slot right there, where most people do, with sidewalks and curb, you're responsible for the landscape. And I do see a lot of people that put desert scape now, rock in that area, and then they'll have their landscape up there, so that they don't have to touch the city right away.
Thank you.
Okay. Excuse me? Yes, as long as they're not blocking any, you know, power boxes, cable boxes, or the water meter, obviously. And we've had a few problems where people cover the water meter with rock, and then we just have to tell them to remove it. Not too, too hard. This is another problem property that I have, that as far as landscaping, and this is on the corner of Park and Poplar. It's a duplex there, and just, they just don't take care of the property. Unfortunately, the property is owned by one of our business owners in town, and I've given him numerous citations on this. He pays the citations, has no problem paying citations, but at the same time, he lets his tenants still live like this, and it's getting a little out of hand and ready to take the next step in upping the citation, so to speak. The same property, couple refrigerators and trash, and a lot of dog feces in the front yard. This is one of my main problem properties on Lawton Street. I'm sure everybody in the city council has emailed me on this one and talked to me about this one, so has staff, residents. I've gotten probably at least fifty notifications on this one. I believe he's running a maintenance, car maintenance place out of his front yard. A lot of cars on the front yard, oil spots all over the landscape. I've cited them numerous times. The owner of the house pays the citations, yet they still keep their yard looking like this. It's a, it's kind of a catch twenty-two. They'll clean it up for a while, and then it goes right back into the same situation like three months later.
And when's the last time we reviewed how much we charge for that kind of a problem?
The process is...
And do we benchmark it with other similar cities?
The process is a notice of violation, and then they have usually a week to two weeks to be in compliance. After that, then we send them a final notification, and then after that, within five days, I'm allowed to cite. Well, it's our, kind of our...
And, and what, what are you gonna, how much is a citation?
Total is 128.48. It's a hundred dollar citation with a twenty-two dollar processing fee and a, the certified mail voucher that we charge them for.
And have we benchmarked that with other cities in the last couple of years?
It's, it's pretty substantial, and, and even across the board. I've, I've heard of administrative citations down at the beach area, a hundred dollars, two hundred dollars, five hundred dollars for administrative citations.
Because my knee-jerk response is, we're not charging enough. It's not, it's not painful enough, or they would get it cleaned up, but I don't...
What we can do is, I, I've worked with staff and my supervisor, Conrad, we try to get everybody into compliance. Usually, they come in and ask us for an extension to clean up their yard after the hundred dollar citation. Usually, they're in compliance. There's not too many, I would say maybe five percent in the last four years, where I've had to actually cite two hundred dollars, five hundred dollars.
And then they'll come over and see me, and ask me to waive it, and, like today.
You don't waive it, right? And I've actually had some residents pay a hundred dollar citation probably four or five times a year. They get into compliance, they pay the citation, get into compliance, and then three months later, their yard's back the way it is. It's kind of ongoing.
And one other question. I have a sense, and I don't know if I am accurate in this or not, but my sense is that we have more and more rental properties in Loma Linda.
Absolutely, sir. I, I've come across that my first year onboard, and a lot of the property owners will say, no, we don't, it's mostly owner occupied, and unfortunately, in my experience here in four years, I would say about seventy percent of the city, besides the south side, a lot of the south side, and Mission Creek, Mission Trails, I would say, pretty close to sixty, seventy percent is rental property.
And do you see a disproportionate high number of rentals that are creating the problem we're talking about?
Yes. A lot, a lot of the owners either live out of town, out of state, out of country. There's a lot of property owners that live out of country that own a lot of property here, and then they just collect the rent, so to speak.
One of our primary challenges with the rentals is people that have a three or four-bedroom house and rent it out to three or four different sets of people. So, there really isn't, one, one, there isn't even a family there that has a pride of ownership or pride of rentalship of their property. It really is a fairly transient, even in the fairly substantial-sized houses in town.
So, the city of San Bernardino has what, like ninety-five percent rental?
Yes, sir.
It's, it's crazy high. So, the city council, this is years ago, correct me in any part where I'm wrong, because I'm trying to summarize it, years ago, recognized that they basically can't get owners to comply. So, if they adopted an ordinance in San Bernardino, if you rent your property, you have to declare it, and you have to get a business license from the city. That, that business license allows code enforcement then to enter the property at certain times to do inspections or whatever, based on that being a business, as opposed to whatever. And that's the way they've got teeth into actually trying to clean up some parts of the city, because otherwise, if, if we were to let it go too far, and not that we're anywhere close to San Bernardino, but that's where they started developing the problem. So, I don't know if that's something we want to look at to get ahead of it. That's kind of controversial. I'm not saying either for or against it, I'm just saying it's something that's interesting because it, they knew that they've got a significant problem over there, and that's leading to crime and blight and all that other stuff. And so, I imagine it's difficult as it is, just being one of you, to keep up with a lot of stuff we got going in here and trying to keep ahead of that. I'm not sure what your thoughts are.
Correct. Our, our code is two properties or more, they must obtain a business license. Obviously, if you have two or more properties, you're running a business of some sort, so that, that's our code. If you have two or more properties that are rentals, duplexes, apartment complexes, what have you, two parcels, I should say.
Yeah, San Bernardino's one.
Two APNs, and you, you are, you know, you need to obtain a business license.
Yeah, I know, I think we need to escalate something, because, you know, this one in particular.
Correct.
I drove past, and this is the kind of, of a property that scares the neighbors into selling their homes.
Correct.
This one, you drive by, and you get the hairy eyeball as you're driving by.
Correct.
And it's very scary. I don't know about, if you guys have ever checked it out, but this one is...
I've had numerous cases here, everything from pit bulls, animal control, dog bites here. They have approximately three to four pit bulls there.
Yeah, I don't know what's going on there, but it is, it is not a neighborly...
I usually don't go over there without sheriff's assistance. Their deputies are always there to back me up there, because you don't know who's coming out of that house, so to speak.
But, is it a rental? Do you know or no?
No, owner, owner occupied.
So, it doesn't happen all the time like that, but...
Correct. There again, all the animal control citations, all the property citations for R-one, you know, landscaping, they've always paid. They are going to be receiving another citation for, this was just, I believe yesterday or today, truck parked on the, on the grass and unregistered, they have numerous unregistered cars out front.
Is there, is there some kind of a code for whatever it is, some, some kind of homeless encampment on the front porch?
It's not really a homeless encampment. I know a lot of people have described that in the emails and the complaints to me, but unfortunately, it is not. They have numerous children there, and they have a lot of, I guess, play stuff and couches and, and another chair, and large, like, just an outdoor setting, a patio setting, but yet it's not a patio. I can't really put my finger on it and describe it, and I don't have any words for it, sir, I'm sorry.
Yeah, if anybody wants the number, I'll let you know. I know the address.
Could we ask the sheriff, have, have you had any criminal activity over there? Is this a house that you routinely patrol past because you're worried about it, or is it just, are they just dirty?
I don't have any personal knowledge of this residence here, but I know we do have some of the residences that we do pay attention to, and obviously, he's called the sheriff's department to respond with him, so I'm sure he has. And I would imagine that when they do arrive there, and if they do speak to anybody, they are checking him in our systems and doing their regular duties.
Do we, sorry, I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to say, because these are the things that I think community people are worried about.
Yes, sir.
And, and when we see the number of rentals dramatically increasing, it creates even more fear for everything from property values to safety, and it's not the kind of community that most of us moved into, and I just assume not see it deteriorate on this city council's watch.
Correct.
But having said that, we've got to do some homework to figure out how to deal with this more effectively than we have up to this point.
With that being said, also, you know, I get a lot of owner occupied properties like yourself, and that's been in the community for numerous years. You know, why are there so many rentals? I live in a college town, university town, you know, it's, it's grown in the last twenty years from the history that I've read, and more and more, you know, just people are buying property here, renting it out to students and medical staff, residents, you know, whoever, so to speak, that is staff of the university and the hospital, at a cheap rate, you know, whatever they could get. And sometimes I've caught twenty people living in a single-family residence, you know, all students, sharing rooms, and, and, you know, we've, we've had to red tag them. I haven't done anything with Mr. Bradfield at that extreme, but Mr. Gray, our last Fire Marshal, we, we've probably shut down, I would say, at least five or six in a year that had at least ten to twenty students living in a three-bedroom to a five-bedroom house, and converted garages, and shacks in the back. It gets really bad. And I feel really bad for the students, you know, having to red tag the home, but at the same time, it's for public safety and the California Fire Code, Building Code, and Municipal Code.
Real quick, two things. I don't know how, if you, if there's a will to do that, but maybe we would direct staff to look into something similar to what, do some research and present a package similar to what San Bernardino started looking at several years ago, so again, we get ahead of potentially some issues before they really manifest.
Well, I'd even like to look at some cities like Pasadena and Huntington Beach and other places to see how they control this kind of a problem. My mother-in-law has property down in Pasadena, and I know they, they've got strict codes. I don't know just what they are, but...
And then, second, I was, can I ask you a question, whether or not we have municipal codes that cover, like, the vehicles and the front, front yard and all that kind of stuff?
Yes, sir. No, no vehicles are allowed on anything but pavement or concrete.
What about up on jacks?
No, sir. That's for the safety of, you know...
Right, because that's, that's a...
I give them the scenario all the time, a child, ball goes underneath, jack falls over, and...
Right, it's a little on the street, and I just saw that one in the driveway, so if he's doing a...
Correct. Usually, I tell them by the way to get the car off the jacks, and they will.
Yeah, I, I think we need to climb on this really fast, because, because there are, there's a definite sequence of slumification of a neighborhood, and it looks like we're, we're past the first step.
I agree.
And I think we need to put the brakes on it as fast as we can.
I like your view, but I didn't know how to say it.
No, I, and I, I think probably what gave rise to this a little bit was the, the excuse that people were able to use with the drought conditions, and, you know, and, and that's kind of where it's just kind of accelerated past that, and we're obviously not in a drought any longer.
But it's, it's more than weeds.
No, you're, you're absolutely right, but I think that allows people...
Weeds, weeds don't cause people to sell their homes. It's scary situations that make people sell their homes.
But I would like, I know we're focusing on one or two properties, but I'd like to get some data, and maybe even some historical data to show properties that you clearly identified have, you know, demonstrated obviously a condition in which it's not up to, you know, our standards, and just to quantify and see, are we seeing a trend arise in that, or are we just all just happen to be more aware of the few that we do see in our neighborhoods? And is that sometimes prevalent? I'd like to get a little bit of sense, because you're the one that deals with it from complaints, so I'd like this, you know, maybe some data that shows, you know, last year I had a hundred complaints of properties that were disshuffled. Well, this year I've got two hundred, and those are the things I want to see.
Well, the, the thing that impresses me about this slumification process is that it only takes a very small percentage of properties to be like this, for an entire area...
Yes.
...to be vacated by, by the, the current owners.
Correct.
And whenever that happens, it, it snowballs very quickly.
Yes, sir.
And you can't, you can't wait for statistics.
I know, I understand.
It just overwhelms you quickly.
Well, it gives me a better sense of the state of the city, because I don't drive on every street, but if there's one, if there's one complaint that I get from residents is about someone's house. I mean, we've had people come to the city council multiple times about houses on Lawton, it happens to be on Lawton as well. So, anyway, it would be nice for me to get a better sense, because that, that tells us that, hey, this is becoming a very important issue that we need to address beyond just one particular property, somewhere we can try to, you know, control it on citywide. I would like to see some data.
Well, I have no problem. I could put all the cases together from that next city council. I just put it together, some slides that Mr. Daley and Mr. Jarb asked for, and what's acceptable and what's not acceptable, so to speak. So, I got about seven or eight residents, and this is one of my nicer homes on Maple, on the south side of town, off of Wellisley and George area, Laurel Avenue in that area. This is what we call minimal acceptable. The grass is totally brown, they've let it die. This is also a rental, just turned over hands here probably about six months ago, and the weeds were about four or five foot tall. Sent them a letter, they got right on it, and they chopped them pretty much, you know, flat, let the grass die, of course, and that's the way it looks like. That was actually a picture taken today. No, no tall weeds, nothing, but everything's maybe two, three inches high, dead grass. Right now, we're saying that that's acceptable because it's manicured, it's clean, the house looks, you know, somewhat presentable, it just, it's just not green, no flowers, no plants. But at the same time, can I really give them a notice of violation? The code says lawn mowed, manicured, and presentable from the street view. That's what you got.
Maybe a few years out from the drought will be able to have higher standards, but right now, that's someone who was com... now, that's someone who is compliant with water restrictions, unfortunately.
Correct. And a lot of people that we were, myself and, and the water department were giving notice of violation the last couple of years. And a lot of people are, they go back to that. I thought there was a drought, you know, the governor signed a bill. What do we do? Now you're saying to water our grass, so. It's kind of a catch 22 right now. We're kind of in the middle right now of everybody transitioning back to a, a green landscape. This is one of my, I, I call it a great landscape. This would be my landscape, because I don't like doing yard work. This is on Brookmere Avenue. He's gone pretty much over the limit as far as hardscape, unfortunately, and then he put turf in the middle of his yard. Do we call it acceptable? We have for the last four years that I've been here. I mean, it's clean, it's, it's, his flowers are blooming every day, plants are manicured, he has river rock on both sides on his.
Is that natural grass or artificial?
Excuse me?
Artificial turf.
Yes, it's artificial turf, yes.
So if he, so if he puts up a flagstick, it's legal?
He probably can. That's a pretty hard surface right there. It's, 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 yeah. But the house is always manicured, always clean. There's never a weed on the curb or the sidewalk there growing. It's, and the houses, I would say both houses on both sides and that whole neighborhood is in compliance 100% on Brookmere there. This is the, the house that I actually cited last week. This is on Lawton also. Weeds were about, you could see the weeds toward the window there, about three, four foot high. Sent him notices probably since, I've been here since 2013. We went back in the history, myself and the city manager today. I started sending him notices back in 2014. And this is the way his yards pretty much looked like. When I, when I gave him a notice, he cuts it down and then three months later, you get this again. So finally, he didn't comply to my last notice, so I cited him today, or last week actually, and he came in today and talked to Mr. Jarb.
Is one of them, he wants to wave it? No way.
The citations, what, what are they?
Save the picture. When he comes in, we'll have it up on the screen.
What is the amount for the citation?
128.48. $128.48, $100 citation for first violation, the $22 processing fee, and then the 6.48 is for the certified mail fee.
I wonder, does increasing that in any way motivate folks or?
Well, as soon as I cite them once, the, the actual code says you can be cited each day that you're not in compliance. So within three days, technically, you could be up to $800 in citations. This is one of my other.
At least he had a burglar alarm.
I didn't notice that.
I didn't notice that either. What are you talking about?
He has a burglar alarm sign, one of those diamond shaped signs. The other one.
I've had two problem properties on the corner of Cielo Lane and Lawton. Pretty much for the last two years, they've been rentals. They were previously owned by the university up until last year. They were always rentals for students and the, the yards were always two to three foot high. As soon as I gave the, the Loma Linda University rental office there on Taylor Court their notification, they had sent somebody out there to go cut the weeds down. It's still not grass, it's still weeds, and this is today's picture, and it's just dead grass pretty much and a lot of low weeds. They just come in with a weed whacker and just chop them down.
Is it no longer owned by the university?
Neither one is owned by the university. They sold them off to private owners. One owner's in Texas, the other one's in Iowa.
I didn't think the university did that.
I didn't either. You can tell them they can take their Christmas lights out down too.
A lot of people tell me about the Christmas lights and unfortunately, our, we don't have a municipal code that says you can't take your Christmas lights down, although there are a lot of cities that do.
I make my wife happy. I could leave them up all year. She loves Christmas.
One of my, another desert scape property that's totally in compliance with the hardscape and the, the water conservation, right there on Allen Way. They're totally in compliance, no problems there. I've just given that as an example of what's going on in the city. There's quite a few homes. I want to say, I got probably about 200 homes that have done this now in the city. And that's about it. Any questions?
My question, I guess, is to the city manager. What are next steps to begin to take? Because I, I agree with the mayor that crime and, you know, general neighborhood decline is the more major issue. I happen to get bugged by all these weeds and stuff growing out all over the sidewalk and everything too. What are the next steps? Do we need to appoint some commission or is this something staff would handle or what are the next steps?
Let, let me do more research and, and bring it back and.
Because I, I do go to other cities. Like I said, we have property down in Pasadena and you don't, that's a much larger city and you don't see this kind of stuff nearly as often. In fact, I haven't seen any of it. And so if we can, if we can, if we can learn from what other cities are doing that are successful in, in battling with this, then I don't even see as much of this in Redlands. Now, I haven't been in North Redlands, but.
North Redlands is pretty bad.
What's that?
North Redlands is, in some neighborhoods, yes. There's a lot of crime, a lot of poverty, unfortunately, and it's those neighborhoods that.
Okay, so you'll bring your report back to us in a couple of weeks. Thank you very much for your.
If I just make comment real quick, I just want to say, you know, my job, I wasn't here to kind of defend myself last couple city councils. And I appreciate Mr. Duper and Mayor, when the real estate agents got on me, it wasn't too fun. I watched it online the next day. And you, staff knows, I'm not here to harass anybody, I'm not racist, I'm not picking on anybody, nor will I ever do that and use foul language towards anybody. Unfortunately, they just took it, you know, the wrong way. The notice of violations were just notices, they weren't citations, and I appreciate you bringing that up, because everybody thought that Gil Garza was citing them. So I appreciate that. Another thing is, my, my colleagues back here, these guys are my, my heart and they, I think they are yours too. These guys are my eyes and ears out on the street, because I'm on one side of town, these guys will call me, they all have my cell phone. Hey Gil, we got a loose dog, pit bull in this area. Hey Gil, they got somebody over here that's walking the street over here, transit, whatever. And these guys notify me about a lot of stuff. And I just want to give them the recognition on helping me out for the last four years. They really have done a great job. Appreciate it.
Good. Team effort. And I just want to say, when I was in and asked you, what's the process for citations and so forth, and you explained it all to me and how you try to be patient with everyone and reasonable.
That's what, that's what, that's what staff, Mr. Conrad Bulowich taught me when I first got here. Let's try to, we don't want to cite them, we want to get them in compliance.
Absolutely.
We're not here just to hand out tickets every day. If, if they need time to license their dog or get their yard in compliance or whatever code violation, you know, whether it be with fire, we, we try to work with them. Hey, okay, we'll give you, you know, this much time, you know, to get this taken care of and get back in compliance, all for public safety. You know, we're just trying to work with them. We're not trying to gouge their pockets like.
Thank you for what you do and we'll see if we can give you some additional tools to work with.
Oh, yeah. I think I have all the tools, it's just, you know, I just, like I said, I just want to give these guys recognition and staff recognition at City Hall. They're there to take all my complaints when I'm not, I'm out in the field and they get yelled at and get screamed at, like Jarb did today, you know, for citation. I've never met the guy, but he says I'm harassing him, so I, I don't get it. So, all right, appreciate it, sir. Thank you.
Thank you for that. So there's no action required, but there's some investigation that will occur. Any reports of councilmen? Reports of officers?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I do have one follow-up to a question that was posed last weed abatement process. I do have a slide. And the question at the time was, the process of putting the fees that are paid to, the city pays to the contractor onto taxes and liens, how, how does that look in terms of our recovery of those? We're able to find some data for you and we took a three-year snapshot. So that top, the top section, invoices paid to weed abatement contractors for that three year period. So 14, 15, 16 is a total. We, we paid $67,000 for abatement that was done on, on private property. The next section, for that same period, receivables that were sent to the tax assessor was 70,000. So there was the administrative fee that was added to that, obviously, that increased that slightly. During that same period, the next section, the top three lines, 14, 15, 16, that equals 68, roughly $69,000. So you'll see, we're not far off of what was actually sent to the assessor. The thing is, is there's no guarantee it was for the assessments that were made during that year. And that next line in section three where it says 2017, we've collected $25,000 this fiscal year from the tax assessor's office. We actually haven't seen and sent anything to the assessor this year. You'll see the spring weed abatement in July. So I guess that demonstrates, yes, it's just, continues on an ongoing cycle. Eventually, we see those monies. From what I can tell in this three-year snapshot, it roughly stays current to, to what we're sending to the assessor. The very bottom section were just revenues we took in here at the city, where we did the work and they just came in and paid it prior to going to the tax assessor. So I guess what I would read into that, that's, those are the guys that it was just more convenient for us to do it and just pay us rather than, than, than finding the work. Since this snapshot, you'll recall, we made some adjustments to the, the administrative rate. I don't know that we see those, we'll probably see that more this year in terms of a bigger gap between what was billed and what was assessed or collected. We did that, my sense was the council was desired, so disincentive to use this program, but if they did, there would be a little more, some meat to it. So probably in this next year, we'll get the first glimpse of, of how that has changed anything. So, anyway, into my report.
Just one, what I think is a fairly simple question. Same question we asked earlier about, in terms of weed abatement, are most of the owners of those properties out of town?
Stand by.
Probably 50 or 60% are residents, old property in here. Others are probably out of town.
When, when just glancing at the list of liens that had come in to be paid, Barbara, you saw that, you probably had the longest look. There were a lot of companies and corporations and land, you know, you know, banks and things that own a number of properties. So I would include those in the out, the non-property owners.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, if that's all the reports of officers, then the city council agenda is adjourned and we move to our council. City Council has successor agency to the redevelopment agency agenda. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Any comments from the public on non-agendized items? Seeing none, the consent calendar?
I'll move it.
Okay, there's a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved unanimously and that agenda is adjourned. The housing authority, are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Would the public like to speak on any items not on that agenda? No takers. Then we move to the consent calendar.
I'd like to pull item number three and discuss it.
Okay. So go ahead and give your question.
Just, can we get more of an explanation on this loan agreement modification and why? What, yeah, what's? Barbara, is that now your role from Pam?
I, I believe so.
Taking up the fight?
This is a whole, I don't know when she purchased the home, she's been in it for quite a while. She had to quit work because of some, some health and other issues with a couple of her children and got behind in her payments. She reached out to us indicating she wanted to keep her home, she'd do, you know, whatever, whatever necessary to, to be able to do that. A consultant that, that Pam worked with, that we continue to work with, John Strickler, he, he spoke with her and, and recommended that it probably was probably the best thing to keep her in the house other than to have a vacant house and, and have to, to sell again. And then we worked with her and with Mark Heps, she rewrite the loan. And taking that balance that she owed, writing it back into the loan, she has, she has worked to, to get her impound account up to, up to speed, so there's, there's money in there for her taxes and insurance payments. And she's gone back to work and, and resolved some of the issues she's had with her kids and a, a single mom with five kids and just looking to, to keep her home, so we're doing what we can to.
I just wanted to make sure that we weren't getting into that gray, gray, gray area where it's like gift of public funds type of thing.
No, 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 not at all. The, the amount that is owed has been written back into the loan, so that it's obviously increased the, the amount of the loan. So, no.
Are you talking about the, the $500 fee waiver is worked back into the loan or? That's not what I thought I heard.
No, not the 500, not the 5, not the $500. But we've done this with another, with another homeowner, we did the same, the same thing and, and that $500 was waived and.
I guess, I would refer to the attorney and just to make sure that we are not getting into any illegal territory by, I'm not sure how it's structured and whether or not it's considered public funds based on the ownership of the house and, and the, the housing authority waiving, waiving fees and all that other kind of stuff is that.
It, it would not be a gift of public funds where the public benefit is to maintain the property in affordable housing under that program. The $500 fee would be a cost to the city of doing business in this regard. It's not required to charge that back to the property owner if, if it's what's perceived to be hardship situation.
Okay. Do, do we have any written, and I'm not talking about this individual, but do we have any, any policy guidelines regarding fee waivers? Because we get asked to waive fees on a fairly consistent basis.
No.
At least in here, it's come up.
If, the only people that can waive the fee are you, so. Then the small one, what is a little bit, how they can waive anything, so.
$500, this one's 500.
Well, it used to come through.
These are not actually impact fees or something that's on a fee schedule. It's rather a, a cost of just the transaction, preparing the paperwork. So it's a little different situation.
So I understand you to say that any fee waivers have to be approved by the city council? Or does the city manager not have authority to?
I, I have to look at finance, we, I usually don't, don't waive fees.
I mean, we usually don't waive fees. There are, we do allow, like, for utility customers, they can file an appeal with us and depending on the circumstances, we can waive like the late charges or if they have an adjustment to their billing, we may do that, so.
But we've had special events that have come in here.
And those generally will come to council.
Loma Linda Lopers is one, and there've been several where they all want the fee waived.
Those come to you. I'm, I'm not going to waive it.
Yeah, so the policy is they all come to us. That's the policy.
Okay, that's the policy.
Yeah, I, I don't get in trouble, see, they start waiving fee.
Push it off on us, we get in trouble.
At least it's five of you, you can, you're gonna have a majority vote.
They can't put us all in jail at the same time?
I don't think they can.
They could.
Well, I, I would like to remember, or I'd like you all to remember, because you